I would say.
Okay, being in at seven o'clock and we'll call to order the meeting for September eighth, 2025, Laconia City Council. And I will ask Council Bogart to lead us with a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor. Recording secretary tonight is Katie Gard- I don't know. It was close. And if you could do the roll call.
Counselor Cheney.
Here.
Counselor Susie.
Here.
Counselor Hoffman.
Present.
Counselor Haynes.
Here.
Counselor Bogart.
Here.
And Mayor Finkler.
Here, thank you. Staff in attendance tonight, we have the city manager Kirk Biati and our finance director Glenn Smith. Now, there's no council proclamations tonight, I understand, so we'll pass right on through that. And I look for, we're going to accept the minutes from the previous meetings, previous meeting because there's been no changes, correct? Okay, so we'll do that. Are there any consent and action items? We're moving right along. This is good. That brings us to number nine, citizens' comments for matters not on the agenda. Are there any citizens here who would like to approach? I see somebody right now.
Maybe we use the word citizen loosely here. Patrick Wood, Ward one, I just want to say a couple of quick things. One, the, there have been letters to the editor that talk about the lack of transparency, especially of the Human Relations Committee and also of the city council. My reaction is twofold. One, it's upsetting to see those. Second, the people writing the letters, if they appeared once or twice before these meetings, they would see how transparent you all are. Everything you do is done here that I've been able to see, and I've been coming to these meetings for quite a while. Now, we don't always agree, and you all don't always agree among yourselves, but that comes out in your meetings and it's an open discussion of all of these things. So I think there's a lack of transparency, it's because people aren't appearing to see what's happening. And I invite them, all of them, to come to these meetings, the Human Relations Committee, city council meetings, planning board meetings, zoning board meetings, they're all open to the public. Come and find out what the city is really doing. So that's my feeling on that. Second, obviously, the primaries coming up, I wish you all best of luck. And I hope the city comes out on the right end of things out of this. The third thing is, I was at the county commissioners' meeting earlier this afternoon, and they, I want to make sure I say this correctly, they commented on the fact that we have a new mayor, at least temporarily, and they actually wished him well. So we do too, Mr. Mayor, so congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you all.
Is there anybody else that would like to address any matters not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll close this at 7:04. Any interviews tonight? Okay, I'm going to ask you, I'm just not going to take anything for granted here. We have no nominations, appointments, or elections tonight, no communications. So we'll go right down to number 13, public hearings. And the first public hearing is Resolution 2025-28, a resolution to adopt and set the amount of the property tax credit for disabled veterans for service-connected total disability. So we'll open that public hearing at 7:05 PM. Geez, this is so much like another board I've been on. Is there anybody that'd like to discuss this publicly? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 7:05 and a half, 7:06 now. Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to the next one, which is 13B, that's a public hearing, this is ordinance 2025-235-12, 235-13, 235-41, a table of permitted uses related to keeping domestic chickens as a residential accessory use in the city. We'll open that public hearing at 7:05. And if there's anybody that would like to address this, come on up. Name.
Good evening. Marsha Hayward, Nine Wildwood Road. And I'm here to express my opposition to this proposal of allowing domestic chickens as a residential accessory use for the following reasons. Number one is space. A Google search revealed that for a family of four to have a consistent supply of eggs, they have to have eight to 10 chickens, and it's recommended that they actually have more than that. Each chicken needs four square feet of coop space and 10 square feet of run space. Now, as a member of the zoning board, I recall visiting Pearl Street and Court Street because they had requested variances to have chickens. The lot sizes were .2 and .35 acres respectively. And when one removes the square footage of all of the buildings, there was not much room left for chickens. The Pearl Street yard in particular was almost nonexistent. So my question to the council is, if you allow any owner to have chickens, how are you going to ensure that the lot size can accommodate a flock and that they can be raised humanely? Point number two, attraction of wildlife and predators. It is not necessarily the presence of the chickens, but it is their sound, their diet, and their waste that attract mice and rats and skunks and fox. And the predators may kill the chickens, but they also stress out outdoor animals such as dogs and cats. Point number three, nuisance complaints. Like Pearl Street and Court Street, many lots in Laconia are non-conforming. They are small, the homes are close together. Neighbors may not like the clucking and the squawking of hens, which goes on for extended periods of time. They may not like the odor from their droppings. There will be nuisance complaints, which in turn will cause the police department or animal control to respond, and there is a cost to the city for that. Point number four, disease. Chickens are susceptible to disease, and they cause illness and death to the chicken, and the diseases can affect humans. According to the CDC, backyard chickens carry avian flu, E. coli, and salmonella. In 2020, according to the CDC, there was an outbreak of salmonella in 50 states where 333 people were hospitalized and 24% were children under five. Chickens need veterinary care when they're ill, and I contacted the local vets, and there was only one vet in the region which will treat chickens. Point number five, chickens have a lifespan of 10 years, approximately 10 years. But their egg-laying capacity is very early in their life. So a lot of homeowners feel overwhelmed, they're left with chickens that aren't laying the eggs that they were expecting, and they abandon their chickens, or they slaughter them without any oversight. So I put a call into the Laconia Humane Society to see if they would take surrendered chickens. I don't know yet, they haven't called me back to find out if they would take a chicken. A few years ago, Suzanne Pearlie spent a lot of time researching how other towns handle chickens. From her efforts, the current ordinance was written. I believe the current ordinance is a very good ordinance and should remain in place. So to recap, the problem of space, predators, complaints, disease, lifespan, are five good reasons to turn this proposal down. Thank you.
Thank you, Marsha. Is there anybody else that would like to comment on this agenda item? I'm sorry, on this public hearing, on chickens in the city. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 7:10. We'll go to our next public hearing, which is 13 Point C. This is a petition to accept Thompson Avenue as a public highway. We'll open that up at 7:11. Is there anybody in here that would like to comment on Thompson Avenue being a public highway? For command performance, hi.
Marsha Hayward, Nine Wildwood Road. I am going to suggest the city not accept Thompson Ave. There is nothing to be gained for the city to accept that road, and you are going to open up a Pandora's box. If you take Thompson Ave, then you will take Morris Ave. They'll be here in front of you. You will take every street that is in that whole Meredith situation that's up there. And once you open that up, there's every private condo association that'll be out there and ask you to accept them as a private road. There's nothing to be gained, and you really just open yourselves up for a mess. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, we have somebody else. Hi.
Hi. George Wunschel, 11 and 19 Thompson Ave. I hope you accept Thompson Ave, because it's my understanding that from speaking with Mr. Anderson in the past, if it's not accepted as a public highway, or whatever you want to term it, you won't be able to plow, you won't be able to pick up the rubbish like you do now. So what are we supposed to do? We pay a lot of taxes. All the neighbors do, and I think if you take each road individually, I'm listening to what she just said, a lot of money is raised, property taxes, and if you're not going to plow our roads, what do we do in the winter? I live here year-round, and God forbid I need an ambulance or a fire truck down there. How are they going to get down if there's foot or two feet of snow? So I hope you accept it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on this during this public hearing on Thompson Avenue? Okay, we'll close the public hearing at 7:12. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if we can just go back to one of them, would you be open to moving item 22A up, if the council would be?
22A?
Goes back to the public hearing for the Veterans Service Tax Credit.
Is there anybody, do we need a motion on that?
Consensus is fine.
Okay, everybody's okay with that? Sure, okay, that's fine. Okay, so we'll open this up for discussion now.
Yep, you can open up, I can give you a little background, we have our assistant assessor here with us.
Please do.
Okay, so this, right now, it's, veterans who are eligible for the service-connected total disability tax credits receive currently the $700 plus $3,000. With the new House bill that just passed, they can't do both, so they're going to get one or the other. So what we're looking to do is to increase their tax credit to $3,700 in for '26 and $3,750 for '27, so they're still only getting one tax credit, but the total in permanent disability would get the full $3,700 or $3,750. They're not gaining anything new, they're just not losing anything. And we've already budgeted this, or, you know, prepped and budgeting this for this next fiscal year, so there's no change in what we're looking for fiscally. And if you have any other further questions, Tara Baker is available.
That seems like a pretty simple explanation.
I think it's a pretty straightforward request.
Anybody else? Counselor Cheney.
Mr. Mayor. Oh, God. I can't say it. The state maximum is $4,000. Is that correct?
I'd have to look over, if it's in here, I'd have to look to confirm. Yeah, I think that's correct.
I believe the last time, we increased this a year or two ago from 1,800 or something to 3,000. We're now-
It's 2,000 before, yeah.
Was it 2,000? We upped it to three. We're within 500 bucks of giving them the state allowed maximum. We're not talking about every vet, we're talking about 100% disabled vets. And I was hoping we could ask the manager to tell us, give us some idea of what, an extra $500, how many extra $500 there might be, how many, put properly, 100% disabled.
Is it 500 or 400?
So right now, they're at 3,700, so if we went up, it'd be 300 more than-
300, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Come on up there, but there's a small number that this actually affects.
I just, like I said, if we were talking about all veterans being one, I-
And how long ago was this done?
This, this house, uh, two years ago, I think we made the last change.
Yeah, it was two years ago.
Two years ago.
And the only reason we're asking for it now is because they're no longer going to be able to stack the two credits.
Right.
Hear me? So we're not asking for any change, just be able to give the veterans who are permanently and totally disabled the same amount of credits that they earn now, earning two credits. Whereas the new bill, they can only receive one, the higher one.
Okay, but Counselor Cheney is asking if we were able to raise it for the 300, how many more, or how many people that affect directly, that are totally disabled? Any idea, the ballpark figure?
I would be guessing, but maybe 100?
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Sure.
You're talking roughly 100 that are property tax owners within the city?
Oh, yes, they, yep, that is a requirement.
So if it was $300, we're talking $30,000. So, I mean, I'd be in favor of making a friendly amendment to this, what Counselor Cheney would be.
Well, we don't, we don't have a motion, I don't think, do we?
You don't have a motion, yeah. Right. So, so if you, once you, once you have everything, you'd go through the first motion. Then you could, you could actually make that adjustment in the second or third motion.
There's your motions, right, okay. And what would that, what would that, but what would that do? I mean, is that something that the city can afford to?
Yeah, we could, we could do that. I would, I would say that we would, right now, we have you at April of '26 at 3,700, April of '27 at 3,750. I would change it as a one-time to 4,000 right now, and then, you know, we would, we'd look at if there are changes and we can go any higher at any point, but that would cover us more than what the next two years, so. I wouldn't, I wouldn't set two more year schedule, I would just do one more number, you know, so the 4,000 at one time.
Does that, what happens after 2027? Is it revisited by the state again, or?
No, this has nothing to do with, say, this is what we had set, so no, it's, that's our numbers. We had made those changes.
Okay. Well, what, any other comments on that?
I would have to support the amendment. I think it's a small price to pay for the service that they provided us. So that we can sit here today and have this discussion.
Well said, how about?
No, I agree.
It seems like there's consensus to do that, so.
So start with your first motion, just read the first motion and do that, and then when you do the second motion, when you do the discussion, throw that in as, somebody can put that in as amendment.
Okay, so the first motion would be, I move to waive a reading of Resolution 2025-28 in its entirely entirety and to read by title only. All in favor of that?
First and second. First and second.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. Counselor Bogart? Okay, is there a second? Counselor Cheney? Thank you, thank you. Okay, so now we-
Discussion and then-
Discussion on that. All in favor? That's five in the affirmative, so that's a sweep, okay?
That's the quick one usually.
Okay, so now, we go to the second one?
Yep.
Okay, so now, a second reading of Resolution 2025-28, a resolution to adopt and set the amount of the property tax credit for disabled veterans for service-connected total disability.
This would be the same as the first one, so this is just a pass-through, and then the third one, you'd make any changes.
Make the change, okay. Have a motion for that? Counselor Bogart, seconded by Counselor Cheney. All in favor? That's five in affirmative, so that's a sweep, thank you. Okay, so now, I move to approve Resolution 2025-28, a resolution to adopt and set the amount of the property tax credit for disabled veterans for service-connected total disability as presented. I look for a motion on this. Counselor Hoffman, the second. Counselor Cheney. Okay, so now-
Under discussion is when you'll make the change. I want to make the friendly amendment.
I don't think it's, is it an amendment?
Just have your discussion and then you can, the original maker can adjust it.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Cheney.
I, I'd like to move that we up the figure from $3,700 to $4,000, which is the state maximum allowed. And I would reiterate for those who are concerned about what we do, that it's for the totally permanently disabled service veterans of this country. And I think it's a short amount of money for those folks and the sacrifice they made. So I would move that as an amendment to this.
Okay, look for a second on that. Counselor Susie, okay. More discussion?
Yep, you can, and then you, or you can move the-
Yeah, any more discussion? Looks like everybody's, go ahead, Counselor Hoffman.
Just want to point out that once again, you know, the city government has to pick up the slack for the state government and their financial irresponsibility, and honestly, how dare they pass a law that that limits the tax break these people can get? I think it's ridiculous, and I'm glad that we can do something about it.
You're right, excuse me.
I would just add to that, what's that?
He's, I just want to make a motion to the, not a motion, but another, the state does pass it down like the county does.
Well, I would just respond to that, that sometimes you get what you pay for. That's all I have to say. Okay.
Move the question.
Move the question, the question's been moved, all in favor?
You've got to move the amendment first.
Oh, that's what we're moving, is the amendment. Thank you, Counselor Bogart. So this is a vote on the amendment. All in favor? Five in the affirmative, okay, that goes through. Now we'll have a motion on the-
Resolution.
On the resolution itself.
As amended.
As amended. Counselor Bogart. Okay, seconded by Counselor Cheney. Discussion? All in favor? And that's five in the affirmative, thank you.
Effective 2026?
Yep, yeah, it'll be effective on the April 1st or 26th.
Okay. So now we're going to go back to-
We plan, we plan for it, just in case. I think it's a great, I think it's a great idea.
Okay, now we're going to have the mayor's report. I've been waiting for this all day. First of all, as a good citizen, Pat Wood pointed out, tomorrow is election day for the primary. I hope the word is being spread to get people out to vote tomorrow, maybe we can get up, what was the percentage last time, I think, in the primary?
10 to 15%.
Yeah, pathetic, pathetic. So I hope we have, we have a good turnout for that, and I ask people, which I've mentioned before, to try to weed through the disinformation and misinformation out there, so you know who you're voting for, and try to pay attention to that. I'd also like to remind people that we're three days away from September 11th. And unfortunately, there are people out there, hard to believe, that have actually forgotten about the disaster that happened in this country on September 11th in 2001, so I'll re- just want to remind everybody, there will be ceremonies around the state, probably up in Meredith at Heskey Park, they'll be doing something. So if you have a chance to reach out to people and just talk about it and keep it fresh in our minds as it should be, that's a good thing. And lastly, I'd like to thank the counselors here for having enough confidence in me to put me in this chair. So I'll publicly thank you for that and-
No choice left.
I'm sorry?
There's no other choice.
No, that's it, that's it. So, but I do want to, I want to thank you, and I want to thank the citizens of Laconia. Everybody knows how to reach out to me, they see me around, so they can, I'll expect to hear from people, thank you. That's all I have to say tonight. Counselor Carmen, you had something you wanted to say, Counselor Susie?
No, but I-
Counselor Cheney.
I would also compliment you. We talked about you being chosen for this position. The other half of that is you put yourself up for it, and I appreciate you for that. I suspect the ridicule will far outweigh the advantages to doing this, but I appreciate you stepping up, I really do, Mr. Mayor. And I, I look forward to the next couple of months and us all participating. Thanks.
Thank you, I look forward to it too. Anybody else, any comments? Counselor Bogart?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions, they're going to be in a series. I'm going to ask the city manager. They are basically yes-no questions, and depending on the answer, they may expand. The first question is, this is based off of a meeting that happened Friday about the God Pods, and I've had a series of people questioning because one of the locations was in Ward Five that they were looking at, and therefore they are concerned because we've had three years in Ward Five of illegal camping and stuff, large quantities of illegal camping and crime and everything else. So what I wanted to ask the city manager is, has the council asked the city manager to look into God Pods as having them implemented in the city?
No.
Thank you. Has any of the committees that are sponsored by the council that are on our rules, that we, that we as a council work on, worked on any of this as a action?
No.
Has any of our departments worked on looking to change any zoning laws, the planning, that- looking to change any zoning laws, the planning, the tenure plan, uh, or anything other than answer questions that would be answered to any developer?
No.
Thank you. Has any outside committee uh, worked on this issue with the God Pods?
I'm not sure what you mean by the question. Any outside committee?
Committee that is related to, uh, special committees.
Yeah, we, we have had committees having conversation, or at least one committee having conversations, yes.
And which committee would that be?
Uh, well, the Human Relations Committee has had conversations, um, publicly regarding these.
Now, with respect to those committees that are not council-sponsored committees, they are endorsed and sponsored by a, the mayor of that time, and as I read the city council rules and stuff, to me, the way I interpret it, and I could be interpreting it wrong, but I'm not quite sure I am, that the moment the mayor hands over the gavel, that those committees become non-existent because their sponsor is no longer part of the city. So, their guidance and their appointments at, at that point have expired.
I'd have to refer to legal on that. I'd have to check with legal. I have not looked into that.
Would you please send, and report back?
Yep, I can do that.
I just wanted to, as a comment, uh, to these questions, and I thank you, I do want to point out, because this has came up as a transparency and stuff to where the public has thought that we do things behind closed doors, and I wanted to assure the public that this issue of God Pods has not been addressed by this council, has not been brought before this council, and therefore, there should be no action being taken by this council or through the direction of the city manager's office in any action towards God Pods.
Well, that doesn't sound like, yeah, it doesn't sound like that's happened.
I'm just, well, the people are coming to me going, they, I, they went to this meeting, and they're, they're really upset.
Well, people can talk about it, that, that's not a big deal. It's better to talk about the stuff than not, if you have questions, these committees, but the council hasn't talked about it, so it's really just kind of like out there being.
That's why, that's what I wanted to put on the record, that the council hasn't in no way, shape, or form addressed it one way or the other. That's all I was trying to get at.
Okay, um, all right, anybody else? Okay, we'll move on now to nineteen, citizens request to comment on current agenda items.
Yeah, do, do committees?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did.
Committees and liaisons?
I'm trying to move stuff right along.
Committees and liaisons?
Ready to adjourn, um, with their, do we have any committee reports? I apologize. Any committee reports from anybody? Okay, seeing none, now we'll go liaison, liaison reports, anybody there? Okay, next meeting, I'm sure. So now we're back to nineteen, citizens request to comment on current agenda items. Or anybody in the public like to comment on current agenda items that we haven't already heard about? Is that a maybe?
It's a maybe.
Why not?
Hi, I'm Kristen Bastille, GALAB. I own Defiant and we, uh, and the Candy Bar, and I just wanted to comment on, I think it's twenty twenty-one D, um, the discussion regarding placing social districts on the ballot, and I would just like to request that, um, you consider putting the social district is when we can have drinking outside establishments in current areas, and I think it's going, it just passed New Hampshire, it was a couple of days ago, so we're looking, um, to hopefully get it on the ballot for the people to be able to, maybe give us the okay for the future for like Pumpkin Fest and the car shows and everything that's going on downtown. So, that was all.
So you want it more than like just Canal Street, you want it wherever, wherever it is?
I think from what I understand of the bill, or what it is, is we can make like a perimeter where people are allowed to go, and I know the local would be on board, I, I'm pretty sure Hector's, so just kind of maybe downtown being a social district. We have been serving alcohol on Canal Street for the past three years, and we have not had any problems. I feel like most everyone has been responsible, so I just hope to get it on the ballot to maybe bring more life downtown in the future.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
When we get to that item on there, I'll be glad to give a little rundown of kind of how would that would work out for us.
I'm sure many will be waiting to hear that. Okay, anybody else? Okay, so now we will go into the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your packet tonight is your financial and operational trends. There is a couple of, um, things that aren't, weren't in there this month. Uh, we'll update you next month on, um, not a big building construction month, um, little dip as we hit the fall, uh, but, um, still significantly above where we were over the last couple of years. Fire rescue calls are in there, busy month, um, for them. Kind of, we try to hit this one each month a little bit specifically as it's a new program. The, uh, Mobile Integrated Healthcare Community Paramedicine Program, you see that it's, uh, um, was a busy month for patient contacts. Uh, we're, we're starting to see this program work, um, and when I, when I talk to the fire chief, not only is this program working, but, uh, the person that's doing the role is integrating in very well with the EMS over there, and, uh, it's certainly been a good program so far. General assistance data and the voucher expenses are out. Um, you see the numbers there. Right now, where we're averaging lines up with what we budgeted for city welfare, uh, we know that that's going to, you know, we expect winter, usually we see an increase, but we're on track right now, only two months into it, it sounds good, I get that, but, um, we, as long as we can continue on this path, uh, we're doing pretty well. Uh, police department is not updated this month. I will get that for you, uh, next month for both months. Property tax collection, motor vehicle registration are all in line where they should be. We don't see a huge usage of parks and rec, uh, at least indoors during the, this time of year, but, uh, there's a lot of outdoor usage. No grievances. Just make a note on the, uh, I've talked about this a few months in a row, but I'll talk a little bit about the impact fees. One of the things that we're asking the department heads to do this year for impact fees is, um, spend a little bit more time on their capital improvement plan presentations to identify that impact fees may be a place that they can use for, um, for their capital improvement projects. Generally, they put in, um, you know, capital improvement money, they might put in grants, they might, they, there's a lot of different areas that they can say that where they're going to try to get the money from, or where they'd like to see it funded from. This is an option for them, but I don't know if it's always used. We used it a lot more last year, and I kind of pushed them on it, but you're going to see that more this year. A couple of things, we've seen the number, the increased numbers. I think just a couple of things to, just to remind everybody on the impact fees. This money is used for, um, capital improvement projects, and it's not a piggy bank, so we can't say, hey, you know, for the, the next twenty years, we're going to put money away and buy a fire truck, whether the money has to be used. It's like five to six years, and it, it has to be, it'll, it has to be used or it's gone, or it has to go back to the developer, so the money that comes in here really should be used, for, and it's used in capital, so we're, we're glad that we've been able to use it a lot more lately. We've identified a lot of projects, and I've asked the department heads, and, and, and the planning director has also asked all the department heads to identify these capital projects that this can be used for, and, uh, they've all taken that to heart, so you're going to be seeing a lot more of that, at least requested. Um, the other piece that came up is, um, the facilities, um, one area in the master plan update that was not discussed, and, and Counsel Susi brought it up, was to have, um, our community facilities added as, as a chapter in this to, to review. Maybe it's not a chapter in the master plan, but at least it's reviewed as part of that, that company that's the professionals that are doing this. I'm going to work with the department heads, I think we're going to be able to do that using impact fees spread across each of the departments as a small share to have their facilities reviewed, so looks like we'll be able to add that into there. Um, the planning director and I are working on that now. Reserve fund balances are, are there. Um, I will just make one small note, the health insurance stabilization account, we have, uh, is most likely going to have some of that money used out of it. We'll have to go through the process to, to correctly to take it out, but that, that would, uh, most likely be used, and I will get you a, uh, the schools are in here, and some of that was going to be used. I'll get a, I'll make sure that anything that's, uh, encumbered or earmarked is identified out of there for next month as well, so I made myself a note on there. Building construction, you see the, uh, we have the, all the permits are there, uh, general funding revenues are fine. Uh, the only other note I'll make on my report is the EMS billing. If you look at the month of August, the seventy-two billable trips, they did probably somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred EMS calls. That number's not correct. It's because they just haven't all filtered in yet. We know that those take a couple of months, uh, or a couple of weeks to, to really update. So as we, as we see these, we have these adjusted, and, uh, it's been a few months since the fire chiefs come in, so we'll probably, especially where we have somebody new here at the table, we'll, we'll bring the fire chief in to give a little update on, on this whole program. And that is all I have for you tonight.
Counsel Susi?
Kurt, Mr. Manager, could you also as part of this, maybe, when we use money out of a TIF? Okay, could, could, in other words, right now it just shows that the money's there, could you show, like, let's say next month, we use some, or some is used. Could you list it out and just show us?
Yeah, we can, and actually, some of that money in there, well, some of that is also money that is going to be used out of it, um, towards paying bonds and things like that. We can, we can give you a, we can actually do a special report and just show you. Yep, we can do that for you.
No, a debit credit item, for example, okay?
Yep, no, not a problem. Can do that.
Anybody else? Oh, Counsel Hayes?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kurt, um, a number of years ago, there was a discussion about, uh, crosswalk signal near Wyatt Park, where one oh six and one oh seven.
Yes.
Could you, uh, speak to, um, uh, Public Works Director Anderson and get her, just a, a quick synopsis of what that conversation was?
Yeah, we can, I mean, we, we can certainly talk about it some more. That, just that intersection was so difficult with so wide, so many different angles, it was.
Yeah, I looked at it this afternoon.
It was difficult, uh, to, to, um, to plan a good, uh, way for that to be in there, um, but, uh, we can talk.
Okay.
Yourself and I and, and, uh, Director Anderson can certainly talk a little bit more.
On the other side of the street is, uh, Counsel Bogart, so.
Yep, yeah, connects, actually connects the wards. So we have taken a lot of look at it, we have spent time on site trying to, um, but.
Okay, with school open and the kids using the park, I'd appreciate it.
Yep, we can do that.
Counsel Luchini?
Uh, just to sort of piggyback on that, I did speak to the manager about, uh, crosswalks in the Weers. I don't know whether they're state or city.
They're ours.
They're ours. Uh, I've had now three complaints about the crosswalks at the Circle. And I guess what I would ask is, uh, to have Wes do an inventory and tell us, I understand there may be personnel issues that make it difficult to get it all done, uh, but, but an inventory and some idea of when Wes thinks we can get these done, because I agree, we got kids out there using them now. Now would be a good time to try and get it done.
Get what done? Painted or signs?
Painted.
Painted, okay.
Reasonable.
Anybody else?
No.
Uh, Counsel Bogart?
If I may add to the crosswalk painting, um, if it would be able to dual color.
To dual color?
Apologize. Uh, to make that dual color, where I've seen this in other, uh, towns that have, and cities that have a lot of recreational, uh, people coming in, and it kind of highlights where the crosswalk is with that two-color thing, just to think about it and see at some point in time if we can, not this year, maybe in the coming budget or something, look at trying to, uh, add that in.
So you mean like a bright blue maybe, or a bright green or something?
Something, you know, you could have the whites on the outlines, and then in the center have it a different color, so it stands out and people can see that contrast.
We can certainly take a look a little deeper. There is some, um, debate on the, on the, um, the traffic control, whether they're technically fall under, uh, okay to do or not, but we'll take a little bit deeper dive.
I did check in with DOT, and DOT says all our crosswalks are ours, and that we can paint them any which way we wish. They do, will not control the color of it within the city of Laconia.
Yep. Um, the other thing with the crosswalks is, uh, we did get run into a little bit of a, um, just a personnel shortage issue, and early rain in May and June caught us a little bit with, got us behind, um, but, uh, we'll, we'll work with, we'll work with them on trying to get those caught up.
Thank you.
Okay, one last shot, anybody? Okay, thank you, thank you, Kirk. Okay, we'll go on to, uh, new business now. Twenty-one A is a temporary traffic order twenty-twenty-five dash seventeen for movie night on Canal Street. We'll open it up for discussion.
You want me to go? Okay, okay. So this is, uh, Celebrate Laconia is looking to do a movie, um, they have a blow-up movie screen that they'll place on Canal Street, um, kids movie, you know, they, we'll shut down Canal Street for them. The way I, we have the proposed motion for you, um, is that it's, we'd like to do that in, uh, Colonial Theater has a show that night. Um, I have started having discussions with them on if it's a, it's, doesn't appear to be a, uh, big show as far as, um, the amount of stuff that they're going to be bringing in and trucks and stuff, so what I'd like is the motion to say we approve it. It continues with me working with, um, both the Colonial Theater and Celebrate Laconia to make sure that it's, uh, going to be feasible for both to interact together. I think we're going to be fine in my early discussions, but I think it's just easier to write it that way.
Where's the power coming from this? Is that power donated by a business or something, or?
Wes, do you know Wes? I'm not sure. Yeah, I, I'd have to check.
Any other discussion from anybody? So do I make that motion, or I would make that motion?
Well, you, you would just, um, you would read that, and then, uh, somebody would make that as their motion.
Gotcha, gotcha. All right, so this would be to approve a temporary traffic order twenty-twenty-five dash seventeen for movie night on Canal Street to be held on Saturday, September twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, is presented contingent upon coordination of parking of tour buses and related vehicles in relation to a constant schedule at the Colonial Theater. For a motion on that? Counsel Hayes, second. Counsel Susi, any more discussion?
Just a quick question, have the businesses down, is this an, an outside event, being an outside event, have the local businesses been informed?
It, it is an outside event. We have talked to Celebrate Laconia about doing that. I haven't heard anything back yet. Um, it is later in the day on Saturday, so it shouldn't be much of an effect.
And they, they wouldn't have to close the street.
Well, well, we, we, no, they will have to, that's what the, that's what this is for. We'll have to.
Not really early, I would think.
No, 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 it's not early. I think they wanted two o'clock. I believe it was two o'clock closure.
That's when they want to close it? Two o'clock?
Yep.
Okay, I didn't see it in this, all right. Okay, we've, uh, had the motion and it's been seconded. All those in favor? Okay, that's five in the affirmative. Uh, thank you. Anybody was here for that or not, but that'll be fun to watch. Okay, so next we have this is twenty-one, uh, point B, this is, uh, ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash two thirty-five dash twenty-one, amending chapter two thirty-five, which is zoning relative to Article Four overlay districts, two thirty-five dash twenty-one, housing redevelopment overlay district. Open that up for, uh. Discussion?
Yeah, I actually am going to. Yeah, I actually am going to bring up the planning department to help with this one. This falls squarely under them.
Good evening. I've got a little handout for everybody. Mr. Mayor, welcome. City councilors, good evening. So.
This is, in case you don't know, this is our planning directive.
Thank you, Charlie. So I'll give a little background. So we're looking to amend the housing redevelopment overlay district. So this was originally adopted in July of ninety-five. It was created to promote redevelopment of affordable housing units, encourage investment in multifamily housing, improve the quality of life for renters, provide housing close to downtown and preserve the character of urban neighborhoods. And to date, no applicants, application has been submitted in accordance with this ordinance. So since ninety-five, no developer in the city of Laconia has utilized this redevelopment ordinance. So in July of twenty-five, we had a local attorney who came to us and said, hey, people might utilize this more if it was actually beneficial. So we were like, really? So we took a look at it and we're like, wow, it, it really, it really didn't benefit anybody to utilize the redevelopment overlay district. So with that, we worked with the attorney and we rewrote the ordinance. We decided we'd use an innovatively unused control, much like we do with performance zoning. But with it, we would add in a lot of kind of performance standards that weren't originally adopted when we did performance zoning. Such as we would limit it to preserve the character of the neighborhood. Not to exceed twenty units per acre. Buildings couldn't be four stories and at least twenty percent of the units must be deeded for workforce housing units for at least twenty-five years. The primary use of the parcel must be residential. Locks with three or more workforce housing units may have a neighborhood store. And they must provide at least one parking space per unit. And buildings must incorporate design elements consistent with the neighborhood. And we would limit access points to having one access point per, per street. And we also looked at lighting. And we have a lot of complaints that come in. I shouldn't say a lot of complaints, but there are a fair number of complaints come in, especially as the time starts changing and it gets darker earlier of people. Oh, there's lights in my eyes, there's a backlight on. So in this, we added in dark sky compliance, which we already have in the site plan subdivision regulations. Except that it really doesn't apply to residential developments that they're just. There's really nothing that applies to that.
Any questions? Go ahead, Councilor Bogart.
You can start with Ward one.
Oh, okay, Councilor Cheney.
Thank you very much. I, I'm at kind of a loss for why a lot with three or more workforce housing units may have a neighborhood store or cafe.
So we're looking at creating a denser urban core. So with that, as you have the urban commercial district, which is your densest of districts in the city, and you start moving out. So you want to limit the amount of, you want to really create that walkable neighborhood. If you're creating the workforce housing units, if you have a place where they can work already in the district, you're promoting that urban growth and keeping, and helping to reduce that urban sprawl. So that was kind of what we're trying to go back to was the neighborhood store, right? Feel of these denser neighborhoods, which we already had in some of these areas that have since closed up. And we're looking to kind of bring some of that stuff back that has kind of expired.
And I am, I guess my difficulty was the three workforce housing. Couldn't any kind of development?
So sure, any other sort of development could, but they would need to do, that would require more. So you might need a variance for that. Because this is in the residential general district. So if you were looking to do a, a business development there, you would probably need a variance for anything over a certain square footage of, of a retail component or like a eating or drinking establishment. So this would add in that a performance, a CUP that would allow an easier use to get to that. Does that, does that answer that?
I, it answers. I, the problem is I don't understand why we need three or more workforce units to do it. Why not? You know, a, a number of units would, could allow for a. I'm sure, I'm sorry. I, I'm sure there'll be a lot of discussion about this before we make a final decision. But if you'd at least think about.
Yeah, so when we, when we're looking at the number of units, we, only twenty percent of the units on the, on the parcel are going to be workforce. So if I was, if we're at three units, I can't, not the math off the top of my head. Tyler, would you go kind of math that out for me? Twenty percent of, let's say that's three, ten, so it'd be twenty units on site. So you'd be looking at an acre lot to utilize the, the, that number of units to then have a neighborhood store or a retail component. Is that about the right math for that?
Yeah, I, I think, because what you're asking is why are we combining that with the workforce housing, right?
Yep.
The primary reason for this ordinance was to promote affordable housing. We put that in there because in these neighborhoods, historically, there were neighborhood stores and they have closed down over time. Now, I mean, maybe for a lot that only has three units, that might not make sense. But there could be larger lots that would support that. And not every unit would be workforce housing, some of them would be market rate.
But this is allowable, not required.
No, it's, they don't have to, they don't, they don't have to do it. It's an option.
Yeah, I guess I would just question whether it, it needs to be three or more workforce housing or just any development like that can have.
And, and that's the number that we picked when we went, went to planning board. It was, uh, it was our best thought of what should be allowable if you're looking to utilize that extra benefit of having a business on that same parcel as well. So that could, you could decide to move that up, you could decide to move it down. That, that's really your decision to make. That was just our reasonable number of what we thought should be allowed for the number of units in the grander scheme of things in order to utilize, to have a, a business on site if they're going to have workers there.
Yeah, we, we picked two or more simply because if you get to five units, twenty percent is two units. So that was essentially it. And we figured out, once you get to that size, then you're, you could potentially start to support one of those facilities.
Yep, thank you.
Councilor Susie?
First, I don't see anything, I don't see anything in here that defines workforce housing.
So.
So we do have it written that it has to be in accordance with the state RSA, because that's where it's actually defined as in state law. So in order for them to deed it, they would have to deed it in accordance with the definition as in state law. So that is in the ordinance.
Okay, secondly. Any examples of where this might take place in the city?
So this would be in the RG district, which these are, so we used to have a zoning map there, I don't know why it was taken down. But, so it'd be, so it's like the Winter Street area.
I, I think about like over on Court Street, just off of Court Street. Because that right there is the urban core, urban commercial district, just off of that, off of, not Court Street, I'm sorry. Yes, Court Street, behind it, between there and Academy, that would be the RG. So there'd be neighborhoods, you know.
So if you look at the, the main arteries, Union Street and Main Street, those parcels that directly abut those roads would be urban commercial. And then usually about, I'll say urban commercial is probably one or two parcels in depth on, along each of those main corridors. And then directly abutting, those would be the residential general. So it'd be those areas just adjacent to the urban commercial core. Which is all the way from the Belmont to Guilford town line, which is the urban core for along Route three all the way up through to the Guilford Town Line. And from just about where the Athletic and Swim Club is on North Main Street, all the way down to about where Vista is, is the urban commercial district. Those are the corridors. So all those residential districts that directly abut those cores would be, would be able to utilize the housing redevelopment overlay district.
May I?
Go ahead.
So if I, if I look at that building being built across Erwin Marine, a four-story condominium with the big signs in the windows and.
That, that's an urban commercial. That's, that's, that would be different than.
So behind that would start the.
Right, just behind that area.
How deep?
That goes, I think it goes all the way back to Mechanic Street there. And that parcel, those, I think Mechanic Street is about the limits of it. Because I think after Mechanic Street, it goes to residential single family.
Are, are you having any discussions with any developers that might want to take advantage of this?
There's, there was one person that came to the public hearing for planning board.
Other side.
Other side. What was her name? Oh, yeah, Joanne Moore. She came to our public hearing at planning board on August fifth and she was in support of it because she already had, I think it was two or three units. I can't remember what, what street she referenced. And she was like, she wanted to do workforce housing. So this, she could actually utilize it to get the density increase to do that. So the one developer we've had reached out to us, it was a positive and she was for it. Everybody at planning board was very receptive of it and thought it was a fairly good idea.
So right now, this is just at the public hearing stage, we're not approving anything tonight, right?
Nope, we're not approving anything, you're just scheduling it for the public hearing. And if we wanted to make changes, it was your opportunity to also put some input.
Okay, my only request is that maybe you can prepare a zoning map for the council. So we could see where this would outline.
Absolutely.
I mean, you know, maybe, maybe not a big thing to put on the wall, but something that you can give us individually.
Yep, we can give you a handout there that will show the existing redevelopment overlay district and then what the residential general district is.
Thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead, Councilor Hoffman.
So I guess, walk me through this a little bit. So if you're, if you're developing a property, you know, right now the difference between a market rate apartment and affordable housing is, is a pretty big gap and it's only getting bigger. So in order to facilitate the development of more affordable housing, this basically just gives them leeway on dimensional standards, science parking requirements?
Correct, because a lot of these are older lots, like built in the fifties and forties. So they're already at maximum capacity. Well, not, I shouldn't say maximum cap. They were built and they might not have enough green space. Or they might be totally paved already. So they'd automatically be going to the zoning board to seek relief for green space and for, for density. So this would allow them kind of an easier access to go and get a CUP to increase that density as opposed to going to the zoning board asking for four or five variances.
So the target of this is for properties that are currently difficult to develop? This would make them easier to develop with the caveat that they have to provide affordable housing?
Correct. This is looking to redevelop the already, already developed areas to, to provide them an incentive to redevelop those lots. And a lot of the, the rationale behind this is we were looking to use, hopefully have a developer come in buying two or three lots that are really small in size, like point, point oh five or point zero seven, maybe point one acres, and then merging those lots to then redevelop the entire lot to create something that is more in line with the character, has a higher density, then provides the workforce housing. And only has one access on the road as opposed to the three that the individual lot said before. And then also reducing the disservices that are on that lot, such as three water connections, three sewer connections. So reducing some of those connections to reduce the number of connections per street. So there's not as quite maintenance as you're going down.
You know, I, I think the city in general needs to do more to promote affordable housing. And I, I think this is much better than doing nothing. It's a good start, but I, I guess I just wish there was something we could do to address the financial difficulty of developing affordable housing in the city.
I, I think we'll, I think you'll see that in the next couple of months with another proposal coming before. It's going to planning board right now and that's for impact fees. So we're looking to, and that, that impact fee ordinance that we rewrote will directly tie back into, into this. So you will see that probably as it makes its way through planning board.
Thank you.
I, I'll just make, if I may, I'll just make a comment that the program that we saw some workforce housing being built in, including the ninety units down on Province Road through the Invest in H money, Invest in H two point O is coming out this fall. So there's going to be increased opportunities for some help in building these workforce housing projects throughout the state. And we had a couple of different entities come through and, and access that and, and take advantage of it. So hopefully, as that word spreads, we'll see more of that.
And that, that, that project right there is another prime example of a project that could utilize this. Should this had been rewritten, it would have been, they wouldn't have had to go to the zoning board for as many variances as they did.
Right. Well, anything that creates less work for the zoning board is okay with me.
Councilor Bogart?
Yes, thank you. The first question I have is I was reading through the backup that these units, the minimum is a four hundred square foot unit. And my question to that is, does that include a kitchen and bathroom within that four hundred square foot?
Yes, so right now in the zoning ordinance, there's no minimum unit size. So we wanted to make sure that we had at least a minimum unit that met the federal requirements size wise that still offered of the, the requirements, such as the bathroom, cooking facilities and a living room and some sort of a bathroom.
Okay. And through the, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I have several questions. Okay. And through the conditional use permit, are they, because I'm assuming, my assumption is they're going to jump right to getting that conditional use permit? Will they be able to, A, change and remove bathrooms and, and, and have communal bathrooms and have communal kitchens?
No, that's, so that would be a different definition than a multifamily use. That would be such as, that would be a boarding house, as we define a boarding house in the zoning ordinance. So that would be, they'd have to meet those requirements.
I knew that, but I just wanted to hear that this is not a sideways door to all of a sudden we've got boarding houses everywhere that, without bathrooms and kitchens and stuff.
No, that was, that was definitely not our intent in doing that. So that's why we, we kept it to, it had to be a multifamily and they have to have all of their own.
Now, the, the, the next question I have is to do with parking spaces. As we move into this, under the, the CUP, will they be able to request less than one parking space to this? Or is that a hard one parking space per unit?
So this is a multi-faceted answer I'm going to give you on this. So we, when we originally wrote this, our requirement is one point five parking spaces per unit. So we said, you could go down to the one. At the same time we were doing this, state law has also changed. So state law used to, it didn't, it didn't get involved in local zoning. And we had two spaces per single family, two spaces per unit for duplexes. And then when you get that multifamily, it's one point five. State law has now changed, so now the maximum the city can require is one parking space per residential unit. So we have, that's going to zoning, uh, planning board next month. We have a whole ordinance dedicated to updating our ordinance relative to all the house bills that passed this year at the state.
Now, add-on question. As you indicated, this is strictly for the RG and one of the areas in the RG. I have to admit, as I looked on my huge map in my office, I couldn't tell the color differences because it's so close. So, but you indicated that Winter Street is one of the streets and, and the density on Winter Street is already dense, compact enough. Whereas throughout some of these neighborhoods, we've already had parking issues at the current level of two and one point five and whatnot. So as unwise the state was in approving that, I fought against that one parking space per unit because it doesn't work in cities that are like this, that are already built. So in a four hundred square foot house, you have two people living there and as you have two people living there, do we have a way of figuring out where the second car is going to go? Because as we've seen and addressed as a council here on many occasions, to where we've had parking issues, we've had driveway blockages. People are just rude. So they don't take any consideration of anybody else. And so I'm just curious to what plan we have to address, not if it happens, but when it starts happening, not if it happens, but when it starts happening, to address all the cars that are going to be parking anywhere and everywhere. And I will continue to mention this because it's going to become a nightmare for these areas of the city that are already at a maximum for parking. And all we're going to do is increase that?
Uh, I do 100% agree with you. Um, so, I think that if we, as we look at Winter Street, because a portion of Winter Street is in the RG, um, a lot of those are already probably greater than what 20 units of acre would allow under the, this CUP. So, they might not be able to actually take advantage of it because they're already beyond that prescribed density that we've, uh, we've set. Um, but in answer to your, your larger question about what, how we would deal with parking as, uh, we now can't regulate beyond the one parking space per residential unit, I think that as we kind of dive into this new master plan, we are doing a transportation chapter in that. So, some of that should be addressed in there. And I, I'd have to defer to, uh, the Public Works Director. I think that there's other initiatives to work on permitting, uh, for, uh, for parking on the street. I don't know exactly where that is at, and, uh, the grander, uh, the larger, uh, complications of adding that and expanding it beyond, I think, the single street that it has been approved on. Uh, but it's probably something that we should think about in the future as we move forward to address some of this parking. So, I agree with you. I don't have a, a, a full answer for that. Some of this is going to come out in the master plan, and I think Wes Anderson is probably working on the remainder of, of the, with the parking permits.
Is that it, Councilor?
I believe so. Anything else, I can contact you and, and
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
With you guys. Thank you.
Yep.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Last shot? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, we're going to, uh, have a public hearing on this.
Yep, so just go through all three of those.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yep, yeah, and the last one will get you to a public hearing on
No more discussion from anybody. So, uh, okay, we're going to move to waive a reading of ordinance 2025-235-21 in its entirety and to read by title only. Uh, motion, Council Chini? Second, uh, Council Hoffman, all in favor? Okay, that's five. Okay, next, we'll, uh, move to conduct the first reading of ordinance 2025-235-21, amending chapter 235, zoning, Article 4, overlay districts, 235-21. Excuse me, housing redevelopment overlay district. Look for motion. Council Hayes, uh, second. Council Hoffman, all in favor? Okay, that was five in affirmative. And now, we'll move to schedule a public hearing on September 22nd, 2025, during a regular city council meeting to gather public input prior to adoption. Councilor Hoffman makes the motion. Second, Councilor Susi. All in favor, raise your hands. That's five in the affirmative. Thank you. And thank you, uh, Robin Tyler. Thank you. Okay, so next we have, excuse me, the 21C, proposed change to the state statute on the Winnebago Saki River Basin Programs Replacement Fund. And we'll have, uh, we don't have to accept this. A discussion on that?
Yep, so, um, we're part of the Winnebago Saki River Basin Program. Those 10 communities, they pay into a replacement fund which, uh, takes care of emergency repairs. Right now, they've, they, the way, what we pay in is 5%, and that brings the value of their, um, fund to, uh, $16 million. Working with New Hampshire DES, I Winnebago Saki River Basin Program, who's chaired by, um, Director Anderson, they have the baseline funding changed from the 16 million to 5 million. That lowers our percentage from 5% to 2%, um, which is a good thing. Um, saves us in the neighborhood of $400,000, um, of the replacement fund for, from us. The problem is that this is in, uh, state RSA, so it's going to need, it's going to need our state delegation to, uh, to work on that, starting with an LSR. So, what we're looking for is that you support us working with, with our state representatives. Uh, Council Bogart, um, as a state representative, is willing to sponsor. Would love to have some bipartisan support on this. To be able to bring this forward as an LSR in the next, uh, um, the next session of the House and, and try to get this changed so we go from 5% to 2% of what we have to pay in. Um, it's going to benefit all 10 communities with, with what they're paying in, and still give the Winnebago Saki River Basin the money they need to make their emergency repairs and, and move forward. So, it's a, you know, I think it's a good win for everybody, including our ratepayers.
Okay, Councilor Bogart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did agree to sponsor this, and I would love, Mr. Mayor, if you would co-sponsor it with me, and together, we can get this done through the State House this year. It would be an honor.
I hope all of, uh, District 5 reps will, will jump on that, I'm sure.
So, all the other communities that are in this are going through their legislative processes. Um, I know Franklin tonight is voting on this. We're voting on this tonight. The other ones are going through their process as well. So, through your motion, if you approve this, um, we will, uh, bring that back. Well, Wes will bring that back to the Winnebago Saki River Basin Advisory Council.
Any other discussion from anybody? Okay, so, well, I'll make the motion to move the city council supports the proposal to change the replacement fund baseline fund targeted, target from 5% to 2%. Look for, uh, Council Chini makes that motion in a second. Council Bogart. Okay, all in, any more discussion? All in favor? That's five in the affirmative. Thank you. Okay, thank you. That was good.
And if I just may add, Mr. Mayor, when I file for this, I'll make sure that you put on it.
That would be very good. Thank you. Okay, so now, we're going to go to 21D. This is a discussion regarding rather to attic. Question onto the November ballot asking voters if the city should create social districts is defined in House Bill 467, which was passed. Discussion on that.
Yeah, so social districts, um, as you said, it was House Bill 467 that the state was passed and signed. Uh, it allows, uh, it allows legislative bodies, if approved by the voters of the city or town, depending on where you are, um, on ballot form, to allow us to define, uh, to define social district. And social district would be an area where you're allowed to purchase alcohol from a licensee. So, it's not just walking through and stop, you know, it's bringing it from home and walk through it. It'd be bought by a licensee and be able to be outdoors and consume the alcohol. Couple of different steps in this. This would, if you approve this, what we're going to do is send it to a public hearing next mon, uh, next week, two weeks from now. If you guys approve it, it'll go on to the, the ballot. If the ballot, if on the ballot it gets approved, uh, we will have to have another public hearing, by the way, just, uh, two weeks prior to the actual vote. But if it passes at the ballot in November, um, then it's going to come back to the city council. Um, you guys will actually be the ones defining what the districts are. So, it's not just citywide blanketed. It's not, you know, what my, what my business wants, what your business wants. You guys would be the ones making that decision. Um, certainly, I would hope that if it comes back, it would be in conjunction with, uh, police and fire and, and code and planning. Just make sure we're all in this together. Um, uh, so, that, that's really what it, that, that's really how it goes. They're really, you know, the difference is, I think, you know, when, um, I, you know, Kristen came up and spoke tonight, and, uh, through Defiant, they do this on Canal Street a lot. But it's individual, case by case, uh, gets approved each time by fire, by liquor. This would give a little bit more blanketed ability to, to do this. Um, and again, uh, this goes to the voters to make the decision on if they want it on there. They wouldn't be deciding on where. They're just beside, deciding on yes, you can have it or not.
Okay, Councilor Susi?
On the question of where, okay, or how long, is it something that we would put in, and then we have the opportunity to say, they didn't work right, we're going to pull it back, that district?
Yeah, I, so, uh, yeah, so I think you would have, I, I think you would have a lot of choice at that point, but this is just saying, can we do it or not?
Okay.
It's all the question is.
And then, once we define it, if we have either some issues, or we have history, or we see something, we just want to change it again, we're allowed to go back to do it? It's not a permanent thing?
Yeah, you could change how you have it laid out. Um, this is just, again, allowing, yes, it's a yes-no question.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Council Hoffman?
Just want to say, I think this is a good idea. I think, you know, the, the unique layout we have of downtown, the, the events we already have on Canal Street and Main Street, Pumpkin Fest every year. I think, uh, there's a lot of good opportunities to utilize this. And I think, you know, our, our city is the exact kind of thing this was passed to, uh, to promote. And I think it'd be great. I hope it passes.
Forget the wears. They do it up there now with, uh, they're doing it next week. So, yeah. Uh, Council Bogart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too think this is a marvelous opportunity, seeing how we're a tourist district area. We have a lot of people that come here. We want to encourage people to come and leave their money behind and then go home. Uh, we love that aspect of it. I noticed on several occasions, I was on the Canal Street area on a Friday night, and this last event we, that was held on Canal Street also had a car show. And it was, uh, there was a lot of people going, had a beer, and they were like, oh, I can't go look at the cars anymore. They had to sit and wait and drink their beer and then go see it, where this does give the opportunity. Now, as the city manager said, this is only enabling, uh, it enables us to open up and have a discussion so that we can set it and, and then set the zones, what we wanted in, all the times and whatnot. That's all set afterwards. So, the question would just be, do the residents and the citizens of Laconia wish to have social districts set up? Then the council itself is responsible for the who's, the what's, the when's, the times, the giveth or the taketh away, and all of that is set by the city council itself.
The Council Susi?
Yeah, and the state in their wisdom passes this and lets the cities and towns do this. But the cities and towns, especially Laconia.
It has been passed.
Right, it has been passed. But s, all these cities and towns, as you said, you know, people can purchase all this liquid or whatever his beverage is, and they leave their money, but the money doesn't go to the city. So, I think the state should amend that opportunity to allow the city to put a beverage license on top of that. The city can retain some of the dollars that are being spent, because right now, everything goes south, sure doesn't come back.
I hear what you're saying, and I think that's through the special event permits that the city does issue, can recuperate some of its funds, and the money doesn't go to the state. It goes to the individual business that is asking for the permit. So, therefore, those local businesses
Taxes and meals taxes. And if you've been on this, as you've been on this council, you've seen many of these, many of these special permits come in, and they get passed. Not, well, they don't have them for nothing.
Okay, you lost me on that one, but this can be discussed after the, we get through this on the ballot, okay?
And it was, it was a little bit of a gray area on whether or not this needs a specific public hearing to put on the ballot. So, we went with how we've done these in the past and run as a, as a regular public hearing. So, it's out there for everybody to comment on if they have
And this will still give us time to get it on the ballot.
It'll, it'll be the bare minimum, but we still will be able to get the ballots taken care of.
Okay, um, okay, I want to, uh, move that we schedule a public hearing on September 22nd, 2025, during the regular city council meeting to gather public input prior to any action being taken. Look for a motion on that. Uh, Councilor Hayes, seconded by Council Bogart. All in favor? Okay, that's five in the affirmative. So, that's good. Thank you all, and, uh, I'm sure we'll get some, uh, feedback from that, uh, from the public. I would look forward to that. I had some people comment on me before this meeting tonight about it, so. Okay, so next we have unfinished business. We've done 22A. So, now, we're on 22B. This is ordinance 2025-235-12, 235-13, 235-41, and table of permitted, excuse me, permitted uses related to keeping domestic chickens as a residential accessory use in the city. So, uh, city manager?
Yeah, so, uh, I would bring up the Planning Department again for this one. For, you know, I'm not sure the direction you want to go with questions. I think we've talked about this quite a bit. We've had it at subcommittees, but they're going to be able to answer your questions, uh, better than I.
Okay, Council Hoffman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to comment, uh, you know, earlier, Mrs. Hayward came up and, and had a few objections to, to this, these, uh, these changes. And I just want to point out that, uh, a number of the things that she mentioned are actually addressed in the proposed ordinance as far as the minimum lot size, the maximum number of chickens. You know, how, how much square footage of space you need per chicken, how the, the food and waste is dealt with. I think a lot of her, uh, objections are actually dealt with in the language of the, of the ordinance. Uh, just want to point that out.
Do you agree with that, Tyler?
Uh, I do. Uh, so, when we crafted this ordinance, we wanted to make sure that we were being fair to the neighbors of those who wanted to have chickens. And so, that's why we looked at lot size. We looked at setbacks. We looked at where on the property you could, you could actually have the coops and the runs. Um, you know, we do discuss waste management, removal of waste. Um, you know, the discussion of, of whether or not, as she'd mentioned, slaughtering chickens, that's not permitted on property. Uh, you, you know, you're going to have to go somewhere else for that. Uh, so, a lot of the, the, the concerns she had addressed, we've already taken care of in the ordinance to ensure that we had those performance standards, so it wasn't a free-for-all. Uh, if there are any issues, just like everything else in the zoning ordinance, the Planning Department is able to take enforcement action on that. So.
Now, you don't have to have the chickens to raise eggs. I mean, you could just have a chicken as a pet with this, right?
Yeah, we're not going to regulate whether or not you're going to have eggs with them.
Well, no, I just, because that was brought up, and I, I was just, uh, I was surprised by that because I, I know we've had in the past some, uh, some youngsters that wanted these chickens as, uh, I guess, comfort pets, or something along those lines. I just wanted to be clear about that. Council Chini?
Tyler, yeah, I read here that it says, uh, uh, our, our legal says, no penalties can be imposed on individuals who don't obtain a license. I'm not sure I agree with that either, but thankfully, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't. But, but what if they do any of these things? Is there a penalty involved if they bring 25 chickens on, on the lot?
Yes, so, uh, the current enforcement action through the, uh, state legislature, that's what governs our enforcement abilities, uh, does allow us to seek injunctive relief, uh, maximum fines of $275 a day, uh, as well as attorney's fees for when we go to seek those items from the court. So, there, there are penalties. Uh, it's just, you know, if we're going to do it through the zoning ordinance, there can't be the permit associated with it. It has to be, uh, these performance standards, these criteria that people have to meet. And if they fail to meet it, there are penalties.
Okay, that's all I wanted to make, make sure. I, I don't see the point in issuing licenses if there's no, right? Impact.
Council Hayes?
Thank you. Tyler, the problem I've had right along, and I voted no out of committee, is enforcement. There's no way that you, you're going to be able to know where these pets, uh, where these animals are kept, okay? Until the neighbor complains. And the council got a correspondence from a gentleman who raised some legitimate concerns, and that's, that's the reason why I voted no. If there was a way that we knew where they were, okay, and somebody went out maybe once a year and just inspected, that they were enclosed, that there was five, that things were being taken care of, I don't have a problem with it. But it just seems that we have no way, and I understand we can go to court and yada, yada, yada. And we all know what happens when you go to court. You know, the court will say, good for you. We're glad that you're trying to look at this, but, you know, we'll look the other way, and in 90 days, we'll be back, and we know how that works. So, um, that, that, that's been my concern right from the get-go. And I understand what the council gives, the council can take away and the whole. But I, I think that we're just asking But I, I think that we're just asking for trouble. Thank you.
Counselor, if I could ask, isn't that kind of how it is right now? That if somebody goes out and does chickens, which we have no, we have no right to do, what, what, what do we do but take to the court? Can't.
Yeah, I guess. Well, the only thing is, it's restrict, right now, it's restricted by, uh, the zoning board of adjustment.
I agree, but if somebody was to go out and say, I'm gonna do it anyway.
They do it anyways.
Right, so if they do that, what, what, uh, do we do but take to the court in issue a fine?
Yeah, it's, it would be the same process. Because right now, we don't permit it only on the, uh, rural residential zone up in the agriculture.
But my point is, if I may, my point is, you're not gonna know what's going on until somebody complains.
Right, that's typically, uh, how it goes. I know we did look at the license, uh, we did discuss that with legal counsel because New Hampshire is a proud agricultural state. That was just something we're not allowed to do. Um, but we did take your concerns and we did follow up on those. This is just what we're, what we're left with, so.
Okay, I'm all set.
Rob, you want to say something?
No, I was just, just in case.
Counsel Bogart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under section I, I J K L, I'm sorry, L. That's a southern version. It says coop may run, uh, twenty, cannot be located within twenty feet of a property line. And I just don't have that because I have a building and I have a shed and I have all these other amenities in my quarter acre lot. So, uh, do I come down to the zoning board of adjustment and ask for a variance to put this next to the property line or one foot off of the property line? And it kind of takes away the twenty feet space that you have from your neighbors? Or I put it in a corner to where I can't, the back neighbor, the side neighbor and everything, uh, and let them share in my joy with chickens?
Yep, so I, I can answer that. So the only way to, uh, that they would be able to do that, to put it up to the property line, would be to seek a variance from the zoning board of adjustment. Um, right now, people, if they want to have chickens in the areas where they're not permitted in the zones, uh, they still have to seek a variance from the zoning board of adjustment to have the chickens, which I will say the zoning board has routinely denied those variances. So I have a feeling that should somebody ever come to the zoning board to put it closer to a property line, I have a feeling the zoning board's not gonna look too favorably upon that.
If I could just add in, um, what this ordinance does is it gives us performance criteria for people having chickens. Instead of just going to the zoning board and asking for a variance for chickens and having no regulations whatsoever, this at least gives us the performance standards of the minimum criteria. And then the zoning board has to cognizantly make that decision. We wrote this for a reason and now they're asking us to deviate. So that is wholly on the zoning board to do. But at least we've outlined the criteria of what should be used and, and what's gonna safeguard the residents to the maximum extent possible.
Follow up, please.
Go ahead, uh, Counsel Bogart.
So if I had a lot of, uh, point one five, then I could go and ask for a variance on the lot size also. So then I could have a variance on lot size. I could have a variance on, because obviously my lot's not gonna give me twenty feet, then I'm gonna ask for two more variances to, uh, accomplish putting a chicken coop in place. And then, once again, I could ask for a variance on the size of the chicken coop because now I don't have the size for the chicken coop. So I can have four, five different variances going on at the same time to have chickens in my yard.
Yep, so if somebody wanted to, to deviate from those requirements, the only way they would be able to do so is if they went to the zoning board of adjustment, asked for the variance. I will say there are five criteria you have to meet to receive a variance. Um, they would be extremely difficult to meet. I can't see, especially the hardship criteria, I can't see why anybody would have a hardship of needing to have a chicken coop. Um, which is, uh, you know, that's why I think you've seen the zoning board time and time again deny permitting the use, especially since we don't have any criteria, uh, in place, so.
Counselor Hoffman?
As I've mentioned, I've talked about this on several occasions, that I'm, I'm in support of this because a lot of other cities and towns around the state allow this. I think more cities allow it than don't. And I, I've, I've looked into this and I, I could not really find any issues arising from, from this being passed in other cities. And, you know, I, I don't have proof of this, but I suspect it's when someone takes on the, not only financial cost, but the time investment to raise chickens in their backyard. I think people tend to actually do a pretty good job of it. You know, it's, uh, it's not like buying a dog and ignoring it. I mean, you gotta go out and take care of the chickens every day. You know, it's, the chicken coop isn't cheap either and, um, I, I don't think, uh, I don't think we're gonna have a lot of problems with this, so.
Counselor Cheney, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, um, first I want to compliment the planning department for this work, uh, this effort. As a chicken owner, uh, who lives in a rural residential neighborhood, I can appreciate that some folks may worry about the sound of chickens and whatever. I guess I'm gonna support this because it sets, at least it sets parameters. Right now, there are none. So you mentioned going to the ZBA. They can go to the ZBA now and, and, and ask for all of these things. At least if we set standards, we can say to the ZBA, they need to meet our standard. And hopefully force the issue beyond that. I think you can go to the courts even after, uh, if the ZBA grants it, you could still, uh, challenge that.
There, there is a, an appeal process even at the zoning board. So there are other options and we are very happy to help out abutters or anybody else, uh, go through those appeal processes as well. So we're very happy to help them do that as well, yes.
Well, I don't think I'll be voting on this tonight because of, we have five people here, but five counselors. But over the years, uh, you know, I've had more people ask why we can't, why can't we than that we should. And I appreciate, uh, Counselor Hayes' comments. But I also agree with Counselor Cheney in that, uh, this will give the, the city more rules in place, uh, to turn to, so. And, and I know that the, uh, the citizen that talked about, uh, you know, rats and, I think foxes and stuff like that, we already got all that stuff here. I got coyotes in my neighborhood and I just live up the road here, a couple of blocks. So, uh, maybe people say, well, they bring more. I don't know how many more you could get, but, uh, I, I think, you know, we're already in kind of a pretty rural area. Except, except maybe for right downtown. So, anyway, that's just my comments on it. But any more discussion on this? Okay, well. Make sure I got the right one here. Yes, okay. So I move to, uh, waive a reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash two thirty-five dash twelve, thirteen, forty-one in its entirety to read by title only. Motion by, uh, Counsel Cheney, seconded by Counsel Hoffman. All in favor? That's five, uh, it's nothing, thank you. So I would now move to conduct the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash two thirty-five dash twelve, thirteen, forty-one, amending the following sections of chapter two thirty-five of the city code. Article two, two thirty-five dash twelve, word usage, article two, two thirty-five dash thirteen, definitions. By reference to state statute of specific, specifically defined therein, thoroughly by reference to the most recent versions of the International Building Code. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Am I wrong? Oh, I split two pages.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry, everybody. It didn't make any sense, I was reading that. Article, uh, seven, two thirty-five dash forty-five, residential accessory uses in attachment to table one, table of permitted uses. Uh, motion for that? Uh, Counsel Hoffman, a second? Thank you, Counsel Susie. All in favor? That's, uh, that's four in, uh, agreement?
Nope, opposed.
Okay, let's, I'm sorry. All in favor? We got three in favor, opposed. We have two opposed, the motion passes three to two. All right, I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash two thirty-five dash twelve, thirteen, forty-one, amending the following sections of chapter two thirty-five of the city code. Article two, two thirty-five dash twelve, word usage, article two, two thirty-five dash thirteen, definitions, article seven, two thirty-five dash forty-one, residential accessory uses and attachment to table one, table of permitted uses. I look for a motion for that. Counsel Hoffman, look for a second. Uh, second, uh, Counsel Cheney, thank you. Any discussion? Final? Okay, all in favor, raise your hands. That's three in the affirmative, opposed. Two opposed, it passes three to two. Thank you. Sorry about that, jumping pages ahead there. Okay, next we have twenty-two C. This is, uh, resolution twenty twenty-
Department.
Twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine, request to extend plantation at Colonial Roads, emergency lane designation and an exception to the city's ordinance on continuing to collect solid waste at the curb.
So right now, we have a, uh, plantation at Colonial listed as, uh, emergency lanes until October thirty-first. The, there's a lawsuit pending right now as to whether or not they're public, private roads. There, it will not be resolved until, uh, till after October thirty-first, so we're looking to extend that. We're gonna extend it where it reads where it'll either be the, um, we have a date and we also have until the court case, but instead of first, it's, it's later. So let's say the, the lawsuit ends in December, we're not gonna be, uh, we won't expect to, to stop plowing in the middle of the winter and, and move that on. So we're just looking to extend this, uh, and if, this has to go to a public hearing. And if you approve this at the public hearing, um, we would also add that you add in the, the solid waste, but you don't have to vote on that tonight to allow us to continue to pick up garbage as well, um, at, at their site. So we're looking to move this forward and, and to a public hearing. And then hopefully, uh, I, I would be in favor of you guys passing this so it continues on as a, as a emergency lane until the lawsuit's resolved or we can move on with it.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Counsel Hayes?
The, uh, extent of the lawsuit is that, that it's, they're, that they're, um, maintaining it's, it's a public road?
Correct.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll make the motion, uh, move that the city council schedule a public hearing on September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five on declaring a plantation at Colonial Roads as emergency lanes with the expiration date of April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six or the date of the Bellknap Superior Court's decision on cases number two eleven dash twenty twenty-four dash C V dash zero 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 fifty-four.
So moved.
Yeah, okay, I got all that other one there on the case, okay. Is there a second on that? Counsel Hoffman, discussion, all in favor? That's five in the affirmative, thank you.
We can do the second half of that with the, with the solid waste at the time of your, uh, next round.
Yep.
Okay, so that's it on that?
Yep, that's it on that.
All right, thank you. So now we're at the twenty-two D. This is a petition to accept Thompson Avenue as a public highway. I'll look for some discussion.
Yeah, I can bring Wes up as well if he has any comments on this. So this was, this is, uh, one of the roads that, um, we have a list of, of roads that are, are private at this time, that are being looked at as potentially becoming public roads. Um, this, this is one of them is up in, um, Methodist Campground area in the Weers. We've gone through all the processes we need, uh, that we were allowed to, uh, that we need to, to make this public. Wes has come up with some preliminary numbers, uh, as far as cost, but not all of them. But again, we, we've just started doing this, we've opened it up a little bit. We had a, we had a bunch of them, we've narrowed it down a couple. I, I, we made it easier to, for us to be able to do this, you guys made it easier. Whether or not we want to do them all at once, it's up to you guys. Not all at once, but move them one right after another is up to you. But, uh, we've done the, we've done the background work and I, I would defer to Wes if you have any specific questions about how, how we came to this point.
Any questions for Wes? Counsel Susie?
The annual maintenance cost of seventy-five hundred dollars, what does that mean you have to do?
That's basically, uh, plowing, pothole patching, anything that we have to do, that we do to a public road.
And the twenty-four thousand dollars?
That would, that was our estimate for basically a little bit of work and a paving job.
A lot of the other roads and that, and the campground need the same kind of work, don't they?
Correct. Yeah.
And is this the only road that, in the campground, that's being publicly accepted?
No, the, the intent is, the ones who have gone through the process is everything other than, uh, Methodist Campground and Haven Ave and Fisk. Fisk, we don't do anything with, so it doesn't enable to participate. Haven, right now, we don't have a majority of the people who are willing to give us an easement, which is what the criteria you've established, so that one's not on the list. But all the others, with the exception of Methodist Circle, which we don't want to take over because it's almost impossible to maintain, have gone through the process of getting enough, uh, people willing to give us an easement to proceed.
So where would this be on your timeline for paving, the twenty-four thousand?
All we, all we ever tell them is, they just get on the list at that point. And it's basically up to the city council at that point to determine how much money you're giving me because that's what drives what gets done after that point.
Thank you. Counsel Cheney?
Yeah, but you'd repair holes and stuff in the.
Right, or that's the potholes and that sort of piece.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Mayor, I, uh, it's, my ward and I support this, but I would tell you that I agree with the lady who spoke earlier that we're gonna get more requests. But, but we're gonna get more requests whether we approve this one or not. So I don't think we should penalize these people because of the potential. Uh, I think they've done everything we've asked them to do in, in terms of process. And, uh, I'd ask the council to join me in, in supporting this.
I agree with your comment about this, it doesn't matter. I think, whatever you do, the people are gonna ask.
Yep.
Any other, uh, questions for Wes? Counsel Hoffman, thank you.
You know, I agree that we have to be careful about these. We can't accept every private road in the city as public. You know, we, we just don't have the resources to be paving all of that, all those streets. But we, there are listed criteria here of what determines whether it should be considered. Does this street meet these criteria?
Again, the criteria is all based off of how you look at it.
They're not very good criteria, that, are they?
I'll put it from this way, is if you don't give me any more money, it doesn't meet the criteria because we can't afford it at that point. It's just a road that's gonna sit there and keep on decaying. So it's really up to, to you to say what you want to do big picture wise in regards to the forty-plus streets that are in this condition.
But this particular street, is, is there business districts and employment centers that are gonna have improved accessibility? Is there improved accessibility for fire, police, emergency services? Would it benefit a significant portion or a small fraction of the city's tax base? What's the frequency of road use? Like, do we know how this street meets the criteria that are outlined in this?
If you go straight by that, it doesn't meet the criteria. It, it's a dead-end road. School buses don't go down it. The only thing that go, really goes down is fire, police and public works and the people who live on that street.
Counsel Susie?
But we still have to do, keep it plowed and open and all because emergency vehicles, right?
As long as you have it declared as an emergency lane. So if you don't decide to accept it, then you would have to begin the process of declaring.
There's really not much difference, is there?
It basically is, is, we would never be able to fix the road. We could be able to do potholes, you know, if they're big enough that they're gonna prevent damage or, or, they're gonna damage our fire or police trucks. It, it, it's really a dead. It's really a dead-end road and a recreational area that really the only service that is, is fire and police vehicles.
Isn't it, is, can't you, I understand the paving cost. Isn't it a lot less if you just kept it like a really hard gravel? Isn't that better than nothing?
I can't even do that technically.
Technically. But if you, but if it's approved, if they approve it tonight and you keep it until you're able to pave it, you're able to maintain it as a hard gravel, which.
What we typically do if we have enough room to do it is we reclaim it.
Okay.
And we turn in that asphalt into a gravel and if you compact it hard enough, you get some sort of, you know, compaction on it. I doubt I can get the reclaiming machine down there. Most of these roads we're dealing in 12 or 14 feet wide.
That's your best, your best option. But in the meantime, it's still a good hard, I mean, just hard dirt.
Most of these roads and these alleys, they're never really got initial compaction. You get large ruts in it from just the normal traffic and the, on it and you've got potholes and the asphalt's failing. It's, the purpose of the Except As This program was designed to be able to bring these streets in in the condition that they're presently in. That's the guidance that I got from the council when we first started. That's the piece that we have to consider, but you can still say that you want to accept the road.
Counsel Bogart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What protection does the city have as it continues to grow? And as we accept these roads, a developer, a very smart developer can say, "I'm gonna build a new development with private roads and build it to substandard conditions." And then, after they leave, go, the people go, "Well, we want to make it a public now." So they, the developers save the cost of actually building a correct street or roadway and the city ends up fixing it.
The, basically the process right now is through the site planning and the subdivision regulation. It requires them to build them to city current standards, whatever the standards happen to be at the date of approval. So right now, any of the new construction, it's even private roads, has to be to city standards.
So could a new development in one of these high-powered, new super zones use a CUP and, and then ask for?
That's totally up to the planning board at that point.
But my question is, can they then, at that time, say, "I don't want to build it to," and get approval?
You would have asked the, the planners on that piece. I mean, from our stand, from the public work standpoint, we want every single road built in the city to be built to city standards.
Thank you.
Counsel Chini?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Wes. I, I would point out to my fellow councilmen that, as it happens, we're being sued over this issue. And so we may not have any choice before we're done. But beyond that, the campground has been there since the 1800s and we've maintained and has maintained those roads, plowed them, et cetera, for as long as you've been here, if I remember correctly. So we're, if we accept them as is, we're not asking public works to do more than they've been doing right along. I understand your, your concern, but I think what I've seen on the planning board is there's strong support for Wes's recommendation that the roads be up to city standards. One of the questions is gonna be, I think, as time goes on, are developers obligated to do city roads to, to provide, not just the development, but to get to the development? And I see that as a, an issue coming up. But in the meantime, Thompson Ave has met our requirements. We told them they had to have two-thirds, wasn't it?
Simple majority was the second.
Okay. And they met that. I think they all voted though, didn't they?
In this particular case, yes.
Yeah. Everybody on the street voted, you know, it's a street we've been, been maintaining forever. We're not, we're accepting it. We're not gonna obligate the city to more than we're doing right now, so, thank you.
That's a good point.
Counsel Hoffman?
So as I'm, as I'm thinking about how we're gonna have to deal with quite a few of these in the future, you know, we have established criteria on how to analyze these, but I also think that, given it's not a very long stretch of road and, you know, the dollar amount it adds to our backlog is not, we're not talking millions of dollars of road. I guess my question is, how many people live on this street?
I think this is a 10. If I'm right. 10 houses on it. No, just how many houses?
Eight.
So for the, for the length of road this is, that's a significant number of people.
Yep.
And then you have the people going to the campground. Anybody else? Thank you, Wes. Okay, any, any other discussion here on this? Okay, we'll do the motion, remove the layout Thompson Ave. This vote shall not become effective until 61 days from today and shall be void if a court or the Board of Tax and Land Appeals finds that the amount paid... Wait a minute, what am I doing here? Is this right?
Yeah, no, it's correct. We just don't, we don't have anything that fits this necessarily, but this is how the motion needs to go.
Finds that the amount paid for damages is insignificant to compensate in a budding property owner. Wow, that threw me off there. Okay, look for a motion on that?
So moved.
Counsel Chini, seconded. Counsel Susi, any more discussion?
Yes, please.
Okay, Counsel Bogart?
Would you explain to me what that motion means? Because that sounds different than what we discussed. Or I'm just ignorant to it and...
No, so what it allows is, if there was anybody who, we just did this on one of the other roads that we laid out, where somebody did not approve of wanting to do this. So we have to set up a damages plan for, to, to pay for. We don't have any at this time on this road, but we have to have that availability. But, so that's why it doesn't actually take effect for 61, well, 60 days and then one day. So 61 days from today. So this is just how all the layouts would, would look if you were making this adjustment from public to private.
Very.
Uh, private to public, rather.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else? Okay, all in favor? That's five in the affirmative. Thank you very much, everybody. Okay. Yes, we have no, nothing else here, so that was a motion to a... You like banging that, don't you? Is there, is that a motion to adjourn, Counsel? Okay, seconded, seconded by Counsel Chini. All in favor, raise your hands. Thank you all very much, we're through meeting number one for me.
Thank you for your initiation.
Time is 8:56.